Calbright Board of Directors is back. We completed the executive session and we are now back with the main public meeting, which starts with Action Item 5.1, Seat Licenses for the Medical Coding Job Training Program.
Thank you, President. Board President Epstein, Vice President Haynes, and Board of Trustees. My name's Nick Schweitzer. I'm the Chief Financial Administrative Officer. I'll be presenting Item 5.1. We are requesting that you approve an amended contract with AAPC, fiscal impact not to exceed So earlier this year, we executed a one-year contract with AAPC for 40 seat licenses for our medical coding program. However, we have, you know, over, I think it's actually over 170 learners so far have requested that program. So we're proposing to increase the number of seat licenses from 40 to 100. We expect that will be sufficient for all the folks that we are going to be able to accommodate in the program at this time. And that's going to increase the contract from $78,000 to the $165,000. AAPC is the nation's largest training and accrediting organization for medical coding, billing, auditing, and compliance. They have more than two decades of experience in training and credentialing, more than 175,000 professionals, and have particular expertise in coding and the business side of healthcare. So we're requesting your approval of this contract amendment, and I'm happy to take any questions.
That's Member Justi Grande.
Thank you. I noticed on the attachments for the contract that the seat licenses include a bundle of ancillaries. It's not just necessarily access to modules of instruction, but it looks as though it appears to include textbooks, professional membership, and licensing.
Yes, and in the certification exam as well.
The question that I have is, is that an issue with providing a gift of public funds if we are giving textbooks to students or if we are giving memberships to an ancillary organization? I'm not quite sure where the dividing line is between what a seat license would be and what a gift of public funds might entail.
Yeah, so given that this is, you know, providing instructional materials, particularly textbooks and other materials such as that, is really core to our purpose and our mission and our public purpose. And, you know, the value of that textbook is really, you know, doesn't extend much beyond, you know, the instruction that we're providing. And so under that basis, it would not be considered a gift of public funds.
Awesome. My name's Derek Gordon. I'm Chief Operating Officer. In the medical coding profession, that book is something that gets marked up a lot. As new codes get added, rather than buying a whole new book, they add those codes in handwritten form. They put notes in there as they learn nuances about which codes make most sense for a patient chart. So over time, as they are adding their notes and putting their own sort of flags in there, et cetera, it becomes almost their own personal intellectual property, right? So it actually operates less as a textbook and more as a workbook. And it stays with them. They usually take it with them to their workplace and all the rest. And it's something they just continually are notating in and amending and using in their work.
Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Grande and Villa Lobos? Okay, please call the roll.
Hilda Cardo Aguinaldo.
Epstein.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Jeffrey Baum.
Yes.
Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Yes.
Tom Epstein.
Yes.
Julina Grande.
Yes.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Yes.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Las Villa Lobos.
Alexis Saragosa.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Onto Action 5.2, the budget approval for marketing channels, advertising channels.
This item is actually a subset of a budget item that you already approved when you approved the annual budget for Calbright College at the beginning of the fiscal year. It included a $3 million allocation for outreach and marketing activities to recruit in the folks that were designed to serve. This is just bringing additional sort of clarity to that budget and asks that we get your approval. We're just asking that we get your approval on each of those line items. One is for iHeartRadio, one is for Google Search, one is for Facebook and Instagram, social media channels. We did not put this out for competitive bid because these are, there's not sufficient competition for each of these channels in the state of California. And this is an allocation that we think will serve all of our outreach and marketing efforts for these channels in the current quarter as well as the next quarter.
And who, two questions. Who's doing the creative? And are we also employing multilingual campaigns there, too? And how is the creative agency selected? And will we see, I'm asking multiple questions. And when can we see some of the examples of the marketing that's taking place?
Sure. So the initial campaigns, we did all in-house. We've been using our own team members to do the creative and then also run the ad campaigns. So almost everything was in-house to begin with. As we're going into this current quarter, we're working with a growth marketing firm called Growth Pilots. They're on a short-term contract with us, and they're helping to generate new additional creative for our search and social channels. That creative, in growth marketing phases, you do a lot of A/B and multivariate testing. And so you have to sort of do a lot of iterations of creative over time and refresh it a lot in order to continually sort of hit your target markets. And so they're able to do that at scale better than we are. At the same time, we're completing an RFP for marketing services. We hope to have that completed in December and be able to bring our selected firm to you for your review and consideration and vote. Once we have that in place, then we will be able to sort of have a more formalized process in place for our marketing activities, which will include brand as well as acquisition campaigns. And I can happily, in your next board report, weekly report, I can send out all examples of all the creative, if that would be helpful to you.
Will they be targeted to different audiences from different backgrounds and family languages?
Yeah, so we have not been doing multilingual. It's all been in English so far. And the reason is, is because all of our instruction, our landing pages, everything else is all delivered in English language. So we were concerned that if we led with, say, Spanish or Tagalog, that we would be setting an expectation that they could actually receive their instruction and all their program supports in that language. One of the things we hope to do, once we've really gotten all of our marketing, our full marketing RFP done and have a marketing partner in place, is to further test that assumption to see if, in fact, there's a way to use, you know, languages other than English to connect with folks without sort of falsely indicating that they can get their instruction in that language.
And then lastly, who on the staff is actually managing all these vendors and buys and things like that?
Yeah, so we have, well, myself. We also have Arslan Cruz, who's been working with us, doing a lot of the marketing coordination. We have a fellow that I think you just approved for his hire. He was consulting with us prior, Armando Malevsky. He has been doing a great job with all of our acquisition campaigns through search and social. It's a very data-driven approach, and he's a data guy, and so has been doing a great job with that. Ben Rocha is our primary creative. He's been on our staff since August, and he's supported by Moses Maynes, who's a junior graphic designer. And so together, that team has been running the campaign so far to bring in our initial beta cohort.
Member Escobar.
Hi there. So just had a question, and some of this may have been covered in previous conversations, new, obviously, to the board. But I'm just wondering kind of if your, what your strategy is over the next, you know, next three, two to three quarters? It sounds like you all are trying to hire someone that maybe in Q4 will take this over some kind of outside firm instead of doing this in-house. And then, you know, I know that with a lot of these ads, it's iterative and you're learning. But do you have a sense of the performance metrics you're trying to see from these different channels? And whether, you know, to decide whether you continue or if you, you know, other, certain channels might, you may learn that certain channels are better than others.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just wondering how you all are thinking about that, the process?
Yeah, so in, so there's a multi-pronged approach that we're using. One is through our external affairs team, where they're going to be doing more of the in-real-life kind of community outreach work through community partnerships, through community-based organizations, working on the ground in local communities across the state of California. We've already been forging a lot of those relationships and begun working on ways to partner with those local organizations to really get in on the ground and talk to the communities we're designed to serve. And then the other ways that we're going to be working is not only testing all of our search and social channels, but also broadcast, not only old-fashioned broadcasts like radio and spot cable, but also looking at Spotify, Pandora, looking at YouTube, looking at podcasts, those kinds of things, to try and find every possible channel that we might be able to reach, hard-to-reach, typically or traditionally hard-to-reach folks. And then always testing which messaging is going to resonate with them best. So it's a lot of, it's very data-driven, it's multivariate in nature. And it's just a process of trial and error and sort of getting to those ones that perform best and then doubling down on those high performers. One thing that we're working on as a team, I've been working with President Hiles on this pretty closely, is determining what constitutes a conversion. So our competitors are University of Phoenix. They're the for-profit players out there. For them, a conversion is the point at which somebody completes an application and actually gets their FASDA form done, and they've now secured that federally-backed student loan, and that money is getting deposited in their account. They might have spent $1,000, $2,000 to acquire that student, but because they're going to get $20,000 in tuition payments through the student loan, they're what we call right-side-up, right? They spent 10% of what they received in order to acquire that student. We're not that. We're providing all of our instruction free. We're not saddling any of our learners with any kind of student loan debt. And so Heather, I'm sorry, President Hiles, and our partnership team has been working on securing partnerships with employers, where employers actually pay to train and develop the workforce that they're going to benefit from. And it's through those payments that we think might constitute a conversion. And so, say, we need to spend $1,000 to find a learner for our program for a specific job, and maybe the employer's paying $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 for a job placement fee for that learner, we're still right-side-up. And so, I know this is a long-winded answer to your question, but what I'm trying to sort of convey to you is that, and I apologize for that, but I'm trying to convey to you is that at the end of the day, it will be a very data-driven decision, data-driven process, where we're trying to really get to these people who are, first of all, very underserved and often overlooked, sometimes very difficult to reach, but who are nevertheless great candidates for these jobs, right? Get them into the program at the lowest possible cost of acquisition, and then ensure that when all the math is done, we're still right-side-up, that we've acquired someone for less than what it costs to deliver the service of the job training and development. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, no, that's very helpful.
Yeah.
And I'd love to follow up and just have, you know, a deeper conversation about that at some point. I have some experience in this space.
My pleasure, yeah. I would love it.
Justi Agonalo.
Hi. Derek, could you help me understand a little bit more about what we're getting for these dollars and how these dollars fit into the bigger picture of marketing? Personally speaking, I've seen a lot of branding efforts from Calbright, very impressed so far with what you guys have put together. And I'd like to know how this fits into the bigger picture of how we get the word out. And I'd also like to emphasize Justi Baum's comments about making sure that we take a multicultural, diversity-oriented approach to our marketing and advertising as well.
Yeah. So some things that we have underway right now are, we're working with a couple of different market research firms. One is called LRW. You all approved that contract at an earlier meeting. They're working with, also with the LA 19, California Community Colleges, to better understand their markets. So we're sort of piggybacking on that initial market research, and they're now doing statewide research. We're actually going to be in LA the first week of December to get their first readout on that research. We've also been working with an ethnographic research organization, a small boutique firm that specializes particularly in women of color. And so they have been doing a lot of work guiding kind of our understanding and insights to the populations of folks that are, you know, women, women of color, juggling multiple jobs, maybe childcare, maybe elder care, maybe all those things together. And sort of what would be the right approach? What's the right messaging positioning? What's the right imagery, that sort of thing? And so we're, again, trying to take a data-driven approach. At the same time, we think it's really critically important, through our external affairs work, to do this on-the-ground work ourselves, to be really working with locally-based community organizations who are already engaged with the population of folks we're designed to serve, and working through them and their efforts, through their networks, really get at those important connections so that we have sort of a trusted partnership and we're not seen as in any way suspicious. And with that warm introduction can really get them into our programs.
So for Google and YouTube, is it primarily, well, for Google specifically, is it primarily SEO? And then Facebook is primarily ads? And the same is for LinkedIn and Twitter? iHeartRadio, I'm assuming it's ads, too?
So iHeartRadio is all broadcast advertising, and we've been, and it tends to be a little more brand-oriented, so call it air cover and ground game. So we consider radio really more of the air cover, where you're getting good brand messaging out there. You're getting a big broadcast message. We're targeting parts of the state where we think radio is going to perform really strongly, Central Valley, Imperial Valley, Salinas Valley, Northern California, also the Inland Empire. So we're trying to sort of get out of the big urban areas where actually we think the ground game is going to serve us a little better, search, social, et cetera. And again, these are a lot of hypotheses. We are going to be testing these and sort of refining our work as we go, but this is what our initial sort of ideas are. With, so as you know, Facebook has Instagram, so that's a primary acquisition channel. It is the top-performing channel. It also tends to be more expensive because it does perform so well, but that is just where everybody is at. They are on Facebook, they're on Instagram. On Google, it's not SEO so much as SEM, so it's search engine marketing. SEO is what we're going to be doing through our, through our own owned efforts, so through our website, through our blogging, through our own YouTube channels, through, you know, a lot of the other things that we're doing through just our own social media work. But the SEM piece of this is really where we're focusing in on search. So with Google, it's a primary search. It's also retargeting, and then the Google Ad Network. And then they, of course, own YouTube, so also then working through the YouTube channels. Yeah.
Member Saragosa?
So I have a question about iHeartRadio, which might be a dumb question, let's see. So I don't use it. My mom uses it, so you're probably right on target. So would that be only people that use the app, or would it go to those local areas?
It's actually a great question. I should have been clear about this. So we're starting with broadcast, not, so it's not the, what they call terrestrial. So we're starting with the broadcast, so traditional radio, what you'd hear on your car radio, for instance. But we're going to begin in our next phase, testing how the app performs. A lot of people have the app preloaded in their cars, they have them on their, you know, mobile devices, things like that. So we're going to see how that performs for us. With the mobile app, obviously, we're able to be a lot more surgical, a lot more targeted in the outreach. With broadcast, obviously, you know, it's a bigger net, even though we're targeting our regions pretty intelligently, I think. But, so that'll be the next phase.
Justi Hall.
This budget is for QT and Q3?
So it's fiscal year Q2 and fiscal year Q3. So the current quarter we're in, as well as then the next quarter.
Would you anticipate that after this budget's used up, we will have to approve a further budget?
Yeah, it's my working assumption right now that we will have learned a lot over the next few months about what's working, whether or not our hypotheses are holding up, what kind of budget refinement we want to come back for, not only for Q4, but then Nick's also working on our 2021 annual budget, which you all will also be seeing. So I think concurrent, we'll be looking at bringing back a request for Q4 of this year funds, as well as then a more accurate sort of projection about how we will want budget allocation for the next fiscal year.
Okay. Justi Anderson.
Quick question, but you said we're only in English right now. What is the plan for Spanish language?
So we have to do more testing with, we're out there right now looking at getting our marketing firm in place. We want to sort of understand the degree to which advertising in Spanish language or other languages would falsely, you know, transmit the idea that our instruction, our programs can be delivered in those languages. So we were a little, we were a little reticent out of the gate to use Spanish language or Tagalog or others in our advertising. However, we want to test it. So we want to see if there's ways in which we can use Spanish or other languages to promote our programs, but when they arrive, they're seeing things in English language and understand the programs will be delivered in English language, and making sure that that doesn't sort of, that there's no disconnect there for the learner. We don't want to set people up for more disappointment. A lot of these folks often encounter disappointment in their lives. So we don't want the promise of a program being delivered in Spanish language, only to then show up and find an English language, landing page and instruction all in English language, and that would be just, I think, really disappointing. So we want to just be careful about that.
Justi Perry.
It may be redundant, but I'm happy to offer help with the targeting, particularly on Facebook. We've done a lot of work recruiting foster parents on Facebook and are very familiar with the conversion from, you know, from lead. And so we've learned a lot in that process. And President Hiles talked about it concierge in our earlier meeting, and I think that's a really vital part of that process of helping, hand-holding people through a process that is heretofore unfamiliar to them. But we've learned a lot in terms of breadth and depth of a buy and screening people and all that. I'd be more than happy to share that with you because, you know, it's still a relatively new field. But you'll be happy to know, we were extremely pleased with our results, and it was much more successful than we had anticipated going in. So we call it using big data for good. So happy, happy to help with that if it's helpful.
I would love that. Thank you.
So you modestly left out your experience working on the Trump 2016 campaign, where you learned all about Facebook targeting.
That was a sin of deliberate omission, or just a sin, depending on how you want to look at it.
Okay, any others? Any public comment? Okay, I just want to, I want to just emphasize something you said earlier, which is that this is the tactic that's being used because we compete with for-profit colleges. And, you know, some of this may be unusual in the community college system, but it's very important to constantly make that point, that really that's who's trying to attract the same students we're trying to attract. So I appreciate that. With that, we can call the roll. Oh, no, we need a motion. Villa Lobos and Perry. Okay.
Just kidding.
You can call the roll now.
Hilda Cardo Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Jeffrey Baum.
Yes.
Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Yes.
Kim Perigo.
Yes.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Las Villa Lobos.
Alexis Saragosa. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the draft compensation schedules.
Good morning, President Hiles, Board President Epstein, Vice President Hayes, and Board of Trustees. My name is Cheryl Van. I am the Chief People and Culture Officer at Calbright. And I'm here before you this morning to introduce the draft salary schedules that we've put together for your review as an informational item over the next month. These schedules were crafted with input taken from the California Community Colleges' administrative salary schedules and the review of the salary schedules for multiple colleges throughout the system. And then the wonderful advice and counsel from a couple of our trustees, Justi Rawlings and Justi Grande, and some early advice from Justi Costa. We have used the South Orange salary schedules for faculty as our guide, given that we have the MOU to work with them, as we begin to develop our salary structures and our hiring processes for faculty. We have jobs posted now and are excited about the opportunity to start to interview and eventually bring on more people to help us build our content. Our goal here is to have you take a look at these schedules over the next month, provide it provide any advice, counsel, guidance, advice on landmines to miss that you can share with us over the month, with the intention of them being voted on next month.
Okay, thank you. Member Perigo?
I just, I wanted to ask if you could clarify on the, on the attachment. It says South Orange salary plus two months.
Yes. The community college salaries for faculty are all based on the 10-month.
So it's a 12-month salary schedule?
Ours are 12, yes, because we intend to be open 365 days a year and our faculty will need to work the year long.
Okay. So I was wondering why it was dramatically different than the South Orange schedule? It's significantly higher. It would, your, your one, I know I'm going to be drummed out of the faculty ranks for even bringing this up, but your A5 would take 14 years for someone in my district to reach that pay level. So to me, it looks quite high comparatively, but I'll readjust looking at it from a 12-month perspective.
Exactly. That is a deep, thank you for bringing that up, because that is an important distinction as we recruit people and talk to them about, you know, what is expected when they're used.
I'm thinking about applying, by the way.
Come on down!
Thank you very much for this information. I'm very glad that you roped in Trustee Grande and Trustee Rawlings into this, this process because I know that they both have exceptional expertise with including the feedback and the purview, or the, the insight from stakeholder groups. Can you advise from a process question, process perspective, how this gets vetted through the stakeholders? And I'm thinking specifically about unions and how their, their voice is going to be heard in this. So I'd love to know more about that piece.
Yeah. I would say that, first of all, whatever we agree to without them is temporary until we engage more with them. So over time, as we have contacts and, once we hire people, then I know that we will have our bargaining unit partners that will come to us and work with us on creating what will be a final schedule. These will not be, because I know, once we're working with those other agencies, their point of view will, will come into play and will adjust what we have so far.
Justy Rawlings?
And I would just add to that, having been a labor leader for the past 20 years, that what's really important is that we have a system of establishing these that, that other groups may be able to support, right? So we don't want to have a drastic change when you have labor organizations get involved. So some of the advice I've given is, is how to properly identify benchmark colleges that would be good comparables for us. And then taking a look at the challenges in recruitment and then having, on a, you know, gradient scale, you know, where do you need to place within those benchmarks, right? So are you in the top 25% of benchmark colleges in order to recruit, you know, appropriate faculty, or do you need to be higher or lower than that? And then setting up a structure based on those benchmarks and the gradient that you need to do proper recruitment. If you have a standard like that, that's easy to convey to employee groups, then the buy-in, when they come in, they're working on their, their first contracts, is much easier because you have a standard that you've set that is, should generally be acceptable to them, having been through the process and, and been recruited themselves.
Any other board comment? Hey, any public comment?
Eric, called you moggy. Yes! I'm teachable.
Good to know.
Good morning, President Hiles, President Epstein, Vice President Haynes, members of the board. As is probably no surprise, salary and benefits are some of the primary things that unions seek out when engaging in labor relations with a district. So it is a matter of considerable interest to me, and I would like to comment on the documents that you have been given. I would, except I don't have them. They're not included on board docs, and it's a requirement of the Brown Act that whenever there is a material that has been given to the board, upon request, you're supposed to hold the meeting in recess until such time as the public can be given a copy. So having never seen the documents to which you are now referring, I would like to so request that a copy be provided to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. We will do that right away and we'll suspend the meeting until, be interested folks have had a chance to review it. I apologize that that wasn't provided through board docs. Is that correct? Yeah, we're going to recess for lunch while you have a chance to review that. Okay, yeah, everybody in the room.
Upon reviewing the salary schedule, I can inform you that it is mid to mid-high. You know, once you adopt for the fact that it's 12-month versus 10-month, it's a competitive salary schedule. It is something that I would encourage you to insist on being fleshed out. For instance, what exactly is a C? What are your rules for initial placement? Is this inclusive of longevity increments or do you intend to have longevity increments in addition? What are the number of workdays? You know, what is the rule for actually earning the salary versus time that you have on your own? At Mount SAC, my home college, as you'd idea, 12-month employees, 12-month faculty have a 214-day schedule. They could be any 214 days and then they schedule their personal schedule along with their manager. Particularly our librarians because our library is now open seven days a week, so we do, in fact, have librarians on duty on Sunday night. So with that, you know, I commend you for having something. You're going to have faculty in about a month and the details do matter. We want to make certain the faculty are appropriately placed and have an understanding about what they've signed up for. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have an answer for any of the questions he raised or is that something that's going to be worked out later?
Well, I just wanted to add that we will take any kind of input from anyone on this body or in the public using the email address hr@calbright.org. So that's HR@calbright.org and anybody, we're happy to get input, feedback from anybody who would like to comment on the schedule.
And also, you know, we are working on those issues but again, it will be subject to collective bargaining.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Brown.
So what is the process once somebody submits an email for feedback to be received, reviewed, considered, and developed for recommendation beyond obviously the collective bargaining process?
Right. All of that feedback comes to me and then we will review it at the executive team level and then make the changes we think that are appropriate and then provide them back to you at the next meeting.
What is the plan to then use this to begin a collective bargaining process?
Oh, well, what happens once we hire people, they have an option to choose what union organization they'd like to affiliate with and then we would work with the organizations that they choose.
Vice President.
So this question is going to legal. So let's say, for example, we get feedback from any number of constituencies and one of those interested parties is one labor union that would maybe at some point may have an interest in collective bargaining and bargaining for the faculty. And their comment could be absolutely legitimate, but we don't get a comment from any other labor union. Are we in, I want to make sure that we're not in jeopardy of showing favoritism for one in our ultimate response to comments. Would you respond to that, please?
Yes, happy to.
Please identify yourself.
Namita Brown with F3 and Legal Counsel to Calbright. That's a really good question. If the situation is that we get only one comment and that comes from a union, I think we look at the content.
Well, that could be one scenario, but I am suggesting that there are multiple stakeholders that comment, but only one of those is a union. Obviously, there are multiple unions that may be interested in bargaining and in organizing.
Okay. So to the extent that we are developing a salary schedule, I think we treat all comments equally, whether they're coming from individual faculty members or unions that represent faculty. And we view it from the lens of does this meet the goals that we have as an organization? Is it going to help us recruit? Is it going to help us retain once we get the faculty? Because after we create the salary schedule, once the employees determine who they want to represent them, that's when we really get into the collective bargaining area. So any commentary prior to that that we view in terms of figuring out if this meets from the HR lens our objective of hiring the best faculty possible, that is not going to be viewed as an unfair labor practice. That is completely appropriate for labor unions to weigh in on and we will have the obligation to actually view it through the lens of does this meet our goals?
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. That was the first reading, so that'll come back. Moving on now to the information items, the first quarter and year-end financial reports.
Thank you. So board policy and state regulations require that we present our annual year-end financial reports and also quarterly financial reports to the board and to the chancellor's office. So I've, the attached presentation today goes through the year-end report for last year plus the first quarter report. I'd like to walk you all through that presentation. There are any questions or if I'm moving too fast, you can stop me along the way. So I want to call your attention first to slide number three, the year-end 2019 financial report. This is the report that we provide to.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Is there a way to put that up on the screen or, just wondering? Thank you.
It's going to be a little hard to see on the screen. You might, if you have it on your computer, yeah. These documents have been available.
Yeah, they've been available. Let me make sure I can operate it myself here. Okay, so.
A team of four.
Okay. So page three here. All right, so this is the prior year financial report that we have provided to the chancellor's office. As you probably see there, the majority of the expenditures are in the other operating expenses and services line item and that's mainly because all of the consulting services that we've been using as well as the administrative services agreement with the foundation for California Community Colleges are all recorded there. Also note that all the salary and benefit costs for Calbright employees are also in that line item because they are currently included in the administrative services agreement. But for accounting purposes, this is the way we have to reflect it and report it to the chancellor's office for the quarterly reports that I'll be presenting to you. On the later slides, we break all that out into the appropriate line items. So moving on to slide number four is the budget that you adopted just this last July. At the time, we were projected to spend almost all of the $20 million in ongoing state funding, leaving about a 9 percent reserve, plus another $15.6 million in one-time funding and then another $14.8 million in money carried over from the prior year. And the next slide is the beginning of our quarterly reports. So this one reflects the ongoing funding for the year. So far, we've spent 2.5 million of that ongoing funding. While those expenditures may look to be a little bit low, we're still projecting the same as what we projected in the budget in terms of what we'll actually spend. It's really, you know, too early to make any adjustments, plus there's good reason to expect that spending will accelerate. So the main components of the ongoing spending is going to be on staffing. And so the budget assumed, you know, roughly 95 positions starting in the first quarter. That was a, you know, what you could say, a conservative assumption to make sure that we weren't in a position of overspending because of hiring. However, we haven't hired, you know, we've hired, as of the end of the first quarter, we had 17 staff on board. We now already have 25 on board. You've just approved several more a little bit earlier and now we've got another 60 that we currently are recruiting for. So we'll get up to that 95 pretty quickly. The other thing to note is that expenses for consultants are a little bit higher than than. you know, what we would have projected at, at the time of the budget. And that's because, you know, we're, we're still developing and implementing our programs. We'd expect as, as we bring on the staff, that the expenditures on consultants will decline significantly. And the need for consultants will, will decline significantly. Our next slide is the one-time funds. As you can see, we haven't, we haven't spent this money yet. And just going through though, I, again, we're, we're sticking to our estimates for now. Several things that, reasons why we're, we're doing that. We discussed outreach, marketing earlier today. We talked about a couple of RFPs that we have out to help us bear, identify our learners' needs. We expect the expenditures for, for outreach and, and, and public awareness to, to increase significantly through the, through the rest of the, through the rest of the year. Educational administrative systems, so this, the, these are your enterprise resource planning systems, your student information systems, your customer relationship systems. We had included 6.3 million in the budget for, for those systems in one-time funding. We're currently actively evaluating several proposals to, for those systems. Our customer relationship system, we've got a vendor for that, and configuration contractor. And that's already, implementation's already started on that. And you, you approved that contract, I think, in August. And then we have put out a RFP for enterprise resource planning system and a student information system. We expect to have vendors selected for that by January, with hopefully board approval in, in February. And that will be a pretty significant expense as well, implementing those two systems. So, as I said, it's, it's too early to, to make any adjustments. We expect we'll, we'll spend much, if not all, of that money. Last is our cap outlay. We had 14.8 million aside for, for cap outlay. We're currently occupying temporary space in Oakland and LA. Got some space here in, in the hub in this building. However, we, and you guys approved a contract with a broker a few meetings ago. They're aggressively looking for space currently in Oakland. I think we're, we're close to, to making a selection on one. And when we do, there'll be significant build-out and tenant improvement costs there. In addition, I've had a conversation, or we've had a conversation with the, the foundation about potentially having permanent space in this building. We'll also probably look at, in, you know, around as well, in, in other space here in Sacramento. But, you know, whatever space we have here in Sacramento, and particularly the, the space in this building, if we choose to, to be in this building, will require tenant improvements as well. So, so we, we expect that, you know, again, that we'll, we'll spend much of that money. And, and, you know, it's certainly too early to make any adjustments to, to, to the budget for, for that money. So with that, I'll, I'll take any questions.
Just a quick question. Do you have any idea where the Southern California offices are, are going to be at?
No, we haven't really started looking for those yet. We have, currently have some space in, in a building in North Hollywood, and then some space in a, in a building in LA. It's temporary space. But, you know, our, our focus is getting the space in, in Oakland first. That's currently where much of the staff are, are based out of. As, as we grow, as we hire, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll start looking at, you know, space in other areas of the state as well, particularly Southern California.
Member Escobar Carrillo.
Hi, just, just wondering, as you think about who will be occupying, who will be in these different spaces, can you say a little bit more about the staff that, or I don't know if it's something President Hiles can address, just to get a better understanding of who will actually be in the buildings?
Yeah, so it'll be mostly support and administrative staff on a day-to-day basis. You know, you know, we are a fully online college, so we, you know, we don't anticipate having any classes or any students really into these spaces. You know, we expect in, you know, instructional staff and counselors and folks like that to be based out of those spaces, to come into those spaces and, and have meetings and, and, you know, work together as teams as needed. But primarily, support and administrative staff.
Trustee Grande.
With the slide three, thank you very much. I see that we've reserved a line for federal revenues. And I was wondering what anticipated federal revenues you might consider coming into CalBright in the future? And then I also see that we have received local revenues. Could you speak to the source of those local revenues?
Right, so first of all, the, the federal revenues. So really, that is a, a line on the chancellor's report. So essentially, we're indicating that we're not expecting or budgeting any federal revenues now. You know, I, I, you know, I wouldn't rule out the possibility in the future that there may be some federal grants that we could apply for. But at this point in time, you know, we're not, we're not looking at anything or pursuing anything. In terms of the local revenue, that is actually interest earnings on our money in the Solano County Treasury.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Baum.
With respect to federal revenues, is there, under any scenario, would a CalBright student ever be able to qualify for a, a government-funded financial aid program and take advantage of some of those resources?
Certainly, we are recruiting for staff and anticipate having staff to administer financial aid. Of course, you know, our program is free. However, as, as we know, for many students, you know, the, the cost of instruction is not just tuition. It goes well beyond that. It goes into, to sometimes materials, more often, living expenses. So we'd, we'd hope to be able to provide our learners with some support around those, in those, in those areas, areas beyond direct instruction, that, that will help them participate in the program and, and complete the program and gain, you know, nice, high-paying jobs.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. We all know that the cost, it's not just the delivery of the instruction, but there's all, a source, a host of factors that have been barriers to students from, from being able to complete their educational objectives. And if there's a way that we can structure in some way, this is not for this conversation, but in the future, that they can access resources to find other sources of support, that would be great.
Definitely, yes.
Okay, so it should be noted that we don't qualify for federal financial aid until we become accredited. And so that's the reason why we, we need to have that at least in here about moving in that direction for the reasons that my colleagues have already mentioned. But that doesn't happen without there being a movement toward an accreditation. And that's why that's kind of key and critical.
And, and we are, we are, do have plans to seek accreditation. DEAC is, am I correct, is the accrediting agency that we are pursuing initially and with plans of hopefully pursuing ACCJC later on.
I just have, I do want, I have a question about the, this capital outlay transfer. I, I, I just, could you just explain that? I'm not really sure with that.
Right, so that, that is actually carryover money from the prior year. So because, because it was prior year money, it's, it kind of, it has a one-time nature. It's, it's money that we got last year that wasn't spent because, you know, we're still, you know, we weren't, you know, just, just starting last year. So we didn't spend the full $20 million last year. So we've carried it over and we've shifted it into a fund for one-time, cap outlay purposes. And that's the money that we're intending to, to spend on the, the lease build-outs for our, our office spaces.
Yeah, I guess I thought that, so the $100 million for startup costs, though, the one-time money, so you're not going to use that for capital? How is, how is that, I, I guess I would have assumed that that would be used for capital, but.
Yeah.
Why, why would you use the operating money for that rather than the cap, than the?
So I, so we, I mean, the operating money and the, the $100 million are essentially the, they're, they're both essentially one-time right now, because the operating money is from the prior year. And so, you know, we just, you know, we targeted that for, for capital outlay this year. That's not to say that we wouldn't spend the part of the $100 million as well for, for capital outlay in the future. Mainly, we're targeting the, the $100 million right now for our, our systems, building out our, our systems. The ERP and student information system and the CRM systems, we're targeting that, for that. And we're also going to be targeting that to, again, for outreach and, 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 you know, build awareness of, of CalBright and its programs.
So just for clarification, I, so I understand the $100 million. And my question is, you're using one-time relative to operation just to, with the understanding that that, it could be broader, almost anything within operations that money could be used for. When I, when I hear, when I hear one-time, I'm hearing that it's, it's really focused in on something that you can only use sort of one-time, and it's.
So, so, so yes, you, you want to use one-time money for one-time purposes.
Right.
Absolutely, and that's, and that's what we're, that's our objective here. Because the, the prior year money, you know, is, is essentially one-time now. We're designating that to one-time.
Got it, okay.
Cap outlay purpose, the $100 million is one-time as well. So there'll be one-time costs associated with building and configuring our, our systems that we'll be using that for.
And there's continuing money, okay.
Yeah.
Trustee Anderson.
Do you mind talking to Member Costa about sort of the budget plays? Because, you know, she's fully aware of how all of those. And what my fear is, is if we're sitting with $115 million in the bank and something happens, you know, are either the appropriators or the administration going to sweep those dollars? Or are they going to look at cutting other dollars because they know we're sitting on that reserve? So if you could get advice from her, I'd like to know in the future what she had to say.
Yeah, I, I will, I will do that. I did, I did discuss this presentation with her before we, before we posted it. But certainly, if you look at the, the business plan we presented a few months ago, we were expecting to spend through, or spend all of the $100 million over the next, or this year and the next two years. That, you know, that's, of course, an estimate. We're, we're, we're early stages in, in, in building out our system. So, so I expect, I expect that, that will change. But, you know, we are, we, we do expect to spend all that money. It won't be immediately, it will take a couple of years, and we'll need it.
But what, what's confusing to me in the accounting is it looks, to date, the money that you've spent has been out of the 20, not the 100.
So far, but later, later this year, we will spend money out of the 100.
Okay.
This fiscal year.
Yes, this fiscal year.
But that's one-time versus operational. So how did you justify, like, all the startup costs that have already gone forward?
So we, so we scored those towards the, the 20 million to begin with. Because a lot, a lot of, you know, the lot of the costs, you know, most of the costs are sort of building staff and things like that, so we scored them toward the 20 million. It's not to say some of them could have, couldn't have been scored to the, the 100 million. You know, it's, you know, there, there, there are, I guess, some, you know, decisions that, that are kind of judgment calls that are made there. Again, we, you know, we are expecting to spend the full $100 million over the next couple of years. And, you know, at, at the time, we didn't feel like, you know, we needed to spend that money immediately. Because we, we will need it over the next couple of years.
I would just add to that, that, excuse me. First off, when we did build the original, from the ground-up budget, we did not only work with Trustee Costa, but also Julian quite a bit here from the foundations, the foundation CFO. And, and there are very clear and explicit definitions of both the one-time money and the usages that are appropriate versus the 20 million ongoing operational funds. And we've been very clear, we, a lot of us getting the beta launched was putting our toe in the water and testing a number of different software systems, a number of different plans, and all the while trying to find, you know, a permanent home and the things that, where we know we're going to make big outlays of the capital. But we certainly wanted to get progress and learn what's going to work with our learners before we scale up anything big and make a big investment. So you'll see, and it is maybe concerning to some folks I, I know, to see that we haven't spent as much as they imagined as quickly as possible. We don't want to make any big investments until we've tested and are very confident about our big investments. So our RFPs for an, an ERP in these big systems are, we're spending our time to make sure we're selecting the right systems.
I, I just think it would be worthwhile for us, and I appreciate Member Costa being involved, but to go see both budget chairs and their appropriate staffs to make sure that they're bought off on how we're doing the accounting and, you know, what decisions we've made thus far.
And, and we will definitely continue to do that. We worked very closely before we presented the milestone report. We spent time with the finance department, and they kind of went through every line of our budget. So we continue to share a lot of information with them, and we'll continue to do that.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other comment? Any public comment? Okay, thank you, Nick. Next up is the report on contracts and purchases.
Yes, thank you. So board policy and, and state law require that we inform the board of all contracts and purchases made by the college. And this includes even contracts and purchases below the delegation authority approved by the board. So this, this report serves that purpose. If you notice on the attachments, we've got a few contracts, mostly for consulting services that were approved in, in October. Our purchases, you know, there may be, there may be some minor purchases left out of this, this, this list of purchases, only because we're, we're operating, as I, as I mentioned there earlier, we're operating through the administrative services agreement with the Foundation for, for much of our fiscal support and, and purchasing. But the major purchases are included on this list. And, you know, most, the majority of the purchases have been for public awareness of CalBright's programs, those, those media buys we discussed earlier, as well as the, the month-to-month lease space that I mentioned earlier. That does, I'm happy to take questions. And I just, one other thing, this, this will be a, a monthly report that we'll be presenting to board now.
It might be helpful for those who were not part of the executive committee meeting to also talk about our internal review with past contractors. One thing that I wanted to share with the trustees or just remind you all of is we started with a very, very small team of employees. And we've been trying to both attract and go through a proper vetting and approval process of all of our new hires. And that really does take a good three to four months. And, and so it has slowed our process of being able to hire folks. And, and so we really are very committed to hiring a full team and moving away from independent contractors. But we did rely on a lot of contractors because there were so few of us as employees. And so. And so, we did go through, the legal counsel, F3, actually went through a process of reviewing all of our independent contractors, just to make sure that there weren't any surprising issues that would come about or that they seemed, you know, fair and equitable. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that process. And so, now, moving forward, Nick can keep us on schedule on a monthly basis with reporting about the independent contractors.
Yes, Trustee Hall.
Is the WeWork amount, is that for one office or is that multiple offices?
So, that is the office in Oakland plus the two offices in Southern California.
Any public comment? I just want to say, on the one attachment, I appreciate that you've got the detail on the start date and date, contract max and contract rate. That's helpful. Hey, we're moving right along. This is the last item.
Final item.
Introduction to Calbright's Job Competency Training Model.
of the board. My name is Audrey Heinerson. I'm the Chief Learning Officer at Calbright College. In this brief informational session, I'd like to share with you the Calbright model of job competency training. It is at the core of what we do and how we do it, and it is what makes us uniquely Calbright. So, I'm excited to go over it with you. Our mission at Calbright College is to increase the economic mobility for working adults who lack easy access to traditional forms of higher education. We offer flexible, free, skills-based programs that provide tangible economic value for both working adults and their hiring managers. We are all about people getting the upskilling needed to stay relevant in today's economy and in getting people into higher-paying jobs. We do this by meeting our working adult learners where they're at and on their schedules. And we do this by providing a unique set of wraparound supports. We are also about building self-resiliency in our learners and to help them develop confidence in their abilities to become lifelong learners while with us and while on the job. So, how do we achieve our mission? Pictured here is the Calbright JCT program model. While we're all about serving our learners, the Calbright journey starts with jobs and ends with jobs. We start with employers and end with employment. Starting at number one, through market research and through business relationships, we identify what jobs in California we're struggling to fill. Once we identify a job, we take a backwards design approach to understand the specific job-related competencies required to be successful in that role. We identify the hard and soft skills needed, and equally important, we identify employer-specific competencies that are unique to that employer. For example, Amazon, the company, has 14 leadership principles, such as customer obsession, ownership, invent and simplify, learn and be curious, et cetera. These leadership principles are core to every employee at Amazon. Therefore, if we have jobs lined up for our learners at Amazon, we will infuse these principles into Calbright's curriculum, as it will be important for our learners to demonstrate mastery of them to be successful at Amazon. Moving on to number two, we get into the learning experience and development. We create robust curricula that take a holistic approach to the learner's journey. Recognizing that learners will come to us at varying levels of skills, knowledge, and abilities, we use competency-based education to allow for learners to progress at their own pace through job-related concrete skills or competencies as identified in step one, and to give learners the opportunity to demonstrate mastery of these competencies. We use instructional design to ensure the efficacy of online teaching and learning and utilize best-in-breed technology and support systems. So, moving on to number three, we advise, enroll, and instruct our learners. We wrap all our programs with a support team, including academic counselors, life coaches, instructional staff, and tutors to assist our learners academically and personally throughout our job competency training program. We leverage on-demand online learning so we can meet our learners where they are and give them the opportunity to learn when and wherever they can, on the bus commuting to work, during a lunch break, in the evening after putting their kids to sleep. Our self-paced, self-directed programs enable learners to progress at their own pace and even allow for learners to accelerate by demonstrating their mastery of competencies through online activities and assessments. And Calbright learners are supported to get an industry-recognized certification to help them succeed in their chosen field of work. Lastly, number four, our learners are placed in a paid apprenticeship to further enable on-the-job training and to apply what they have learned in a real-life working context. Our learners will continue to be supported by Calbright's support and instructional teams, as well as company-sponsored mentors. This is where the learner and employer relationship begins to flourish, all of which ends with assisting in job placement. Job competency training at Calbright delivers on a program model meant for our learners to get that higher-paying job, that higher-paying, more stable job. In sum, our model starts with identifying quality jobs employers are struggling to fill. We reverse engineer the exact competencies required for that job, and we build unique training curricula at an accessible reading and comprehension level tied to specific job competencies. We deliver no-term, self-paced, online, non-credit programs that have a multi-layered, learner-support-focused ecosystem. We certify mastery of job competencies. Our learners enter into paid on-the-job training and apply what they have learned while on the job with continued support by Calbright staff. We aim to place our learners in full-time employment in a new economy job and continue to work with them beyond post-employment through alumni services and continued learner support by further upskilling in areas like conflict resolution and financial planning and literacy. Here is where we aim to truly set them up for long-term success and where we aim to really solve generational poverty. So, this job competency training methodology is uniquely Calbright and leads to the development of unique programs with unique content delivered in a unique way. It is highly focused on our learners to get that great upwardly mobile job. It is designed to be completed within a year and to be done at scale. We are highly responsive to market demands, and we are building an infrastructure that is highly elastic while remaining at the core a high-quality educational experience. With our comprehensive and specialized learner services team, working hand-in-hand with the instructional team, while being supported by best-in-breed technology, we are able to meet learners where they are, wherever they are, and to set them on a path of lifelong learning, which may include going on to pursue an advanced degree. Thank you for your time and listening. I hope it was informative. We now have a couple of minutes for any questions you may have.
Trustee Hall.
You know, I don't want to take up too much time, but I was just wondering if you could give a real-life example of Joe or Jane are sitting at their home, and they're upset with their job, and they say, "I want to do something about my job situation. I want to move up or move out and get something better." And they go online, they see this thing called Calbright. So, what happens then? And just tell me about the support that you give and how you talk them through the process and how you get them to focus in on a specific type of job training and move on.
So, we do support learners from pre-enrollment all the way through post-employment. That's our model. So, with the pre-enrollment stage, if they are interested, and this actually happened to me when I was driving over this morning in my car, and the driver actually was saying, "Oh, this is actually a great program for my son." So, I actually walked her through this as well. They will contact us. We have learner services, we have concierge, we have academic counselors. We are now filling out the coach's role. That's the life coach role. So, they will...
Who's the first person they talk to when they contact Calbright?
There's a concierge, and so, it's basically like a general help desk. So, there's several people who are at the front lines, offering any sort of customer support services, any questions, answering any of the front-end questions.
And so, Joe says, "Look, I'm at a job I'm not happy with. How do I move up?" I'm just trying to get an idea of the real-life interaction that happens when some people, when someone sees Calbright and then contacts Calbright.
Yeah, so, I'm not on the concierge team, but from what I've seen, a learner, oh, maybe you can, Derek? Okay.
So, just the, what will happen is, is actually, our crack marketing team will, you know, get someone's attention, and they'll come in, and they actually are on the landing page where they get some information about the various programs we have on offer. When they hit "I want to get started," they actually then go into the California Community Colleges' application system. And because we're non-credit, we have the short application process that the California Community Colleges provides. We also have a little sort of help icon that we've put on the screen so that throughout that process, if at any time someone gets stuck or they feel like they can't get through it, they just hit that help icon in the concierge that she was just talking about, then can get online with them through chat, through a Zoom call, through a telephone call, and help get them through the rest of that application process. When they complete their application, they then are able to schedule an appointment with what we call a learner advocate. It's an academic counselor. It's a traditional faculty role in traditional community colleges, where they are able to talk through, sort of assess their strengths, their interests, what they would like to do with their careers, and to sort of confirm that there's a pathway at Calbright that's really going to help them achieve their goals and objectives. The academic counselor then produces a learner education plan and provides that plan to the learner and walks them through it. And then, they sort of unlocks the next step, which is that they enroll in Audrey's team's first program is called Essentials. So, you want to maybe talk through the essentials process and...
Sure. So, the college and career essential skills course is to ensure that our learners do have the hard and soft skills that's related to the job. So, this will also give them, you know, the basic skills and the clarity around what this job really means. This is a time in which they can not only brush up on skills they may already have as applied to this specific job, but also a chance to make sure that, you know, for example, medical coding is something that they really want to do and that is an actual fit.
They can also then, if they have any issues that are non-instructional, non-academic, the life coaches are really there to provide psychosocial supports. So, maybe they're struggling with childcare, or maybe there's an interpersonal conflict that they're dealing with, or there's something to do with housing or food insecurity. That life coach is really there to provide supports that go beyond the instructional supports and go beyond what our concierge team does. Concierge team is really more about sort of basic customer service and helps get them maybe to the right person. You need to talk to an instructor, or maybe you need to talk to a life coach, or maybe your academic counselor is somebody you need to spend some more time with. The concierge makes sure that they're connecting you to the right resource based on what your issue is. But the totality of all those folks is then constitutes our wraparound services so that we can really ensure that people are set up to succeed to the maximum extent possible.
Member Fitzgerald?
Thank you. No questions, just two comments. I just wanted to say, the idea of the concierge is really parallel to what we see in the California Community College system as the welcome center and is a part of this movement of guided pathways where it's really caring about kind of cradling the customer, the student, the learner into completion. So, I really, it's really awesome to see that, and I just want to compliment you on that. And then, secondly, whoever does your graphics is doing a fantastic job. Just wanted to say that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Ben Rocha and also, he's still a student, Moses Maynes. They have been together doing all of our graphics, and thank you. I think they're doing a great job.
Trustee Parago?
I think when I hear what you describe, it sounds like the dream we'd like to have at every community college. So, I'm just trying to kind of unpack in my mind the fact that you're going to run up against the 50% law here at some point. So, is the concierge kind of considered a staff, a classified position? Is that where that would be seated? Or is it a counseling position? Is it faculty or is it staff?
Derek, I think you skipped also the learner advocate, which is more of a counselor classification.
Sorry about that.
Concierge would be classified.
Right.
And then, learner advocate is a counselor-level person who also has faculty-level capabilities. And then, the learner coach is yet another distinction. So, those are three different roles.
Okay, so, the learner would be, the learner coach would be what we consider faculty traditionally, and then counselors, and then classified. So, the counselor and classified level are classically on the wrong side of the 50% law. They're not considered instructional. So, I'm just looking at, the way this is set up is exactly, again, like what we'd really love to see, having that much counseling and that much wraparound services for students. But we run into that 50% law, which makes that challenging. So, I'm just going to tell you, as you build this and think about it, to really designate, you know, who's on the instructional side and who's not, to make sure that you have that balance right. Because, you know, at most colleges, the student counselor ratio is quite high because of that 50% law. So, just in hearing it, I love the fundamental, the philosophy behind it. I'm just not sure that as it unfolds, it'll be practical because of that parameter.
One instruct, I'm not an expert, so, but one instruction that I believe we got from the chancellor's office is that they would not be evaluating us on the 50% rule adherence because we don't take apportionment funding. And so, my sense is that right now, that's not an issue for us. And then, what we're trying to do is make sure that for the faculty roles, there's the academic counselor, what we call the learner advocate, the life coach, and then, of course, the instructional team. All three of those roles are sort of what would be considered traditional faculty roles. That's where I think you're going to see us doing a lot more hiring as we move down the line. But, and we can get greater clarification on this.
I would just double check because you very well may have gotten that instruction, and it's outside of what I understand. So, I would just definitely make sure that you have full clarity on that so that if that's not the case, you're not building something you can't sustain.
Thank you, yeah.
Trustee Villalobos?
You know, a couple of things you said that really resonate with me. My former CEO and I created a program that was run, an employment program for veterans that we ran and expanded at four different states in DC. And wraparound services were incredibly important in the success we had in placing veterans and maintaining the retention rates that we had, excuse me, but also the ongoing support that our veterans received even after being placed and how we tracked them for up to a year or even beyond in some cases to make sure that they were doing well and things were working out. So, I wish I'd had the opportunity back then to access something like what you guys and what we are implementing here because it is definitely going to make a difference. You know, when you take a look at the veteran population that we were working with, low-income, underemployed or unemployed, and the resources that they were able to get through our program and other partnerships, workforce centers, workforce investment boards, you know, the wheels are turning because now I'm thinking, I'm putting my veteran hat on, and I'm thinking about, how can we get all of these nonprofits that are... about, how can we get all of these nonprofits that are getting veterans back to work, tap, to, to tap into this system, which, you know, it's, it's going to be free, so it's a win-win, right? But also to get our nonprofit partners to support veterans once they are getting ready to get placed into those jobs by, you know, providing equipment or uniforms or, you know, suits or anything they need to get started in that job, and then to continue to provide ongoing support, you know, along with what you guys are going to be doing. So it's really exciting to hear that, you know, that's going to be a part of the plan or that is part of the plan. Along with that, are you guys planning on tracking retention placement, salary rates and things like that?
Yeah. Go ahead, yeah.
No, go ahead. Absolutely. I would think that that would be a critical data point for us. Yeah.
One thing that is required in our legislation is that we, you know, be able to show wage gain. And so something that we're really concerned with is wage gain. And I will say that for our president and CEO, this is something that she brings to our staff meetings every single week, which is, you know, this is about a better life. And sure, it's about jobs, but it's not just any job. You know, it's a job that leads to a better life for the people we serve. And so there are a lot of different measures that go beyond just wage gain. For instance, they were placed in that job, were they in that job for six months, are they in that job for 12 months, are they in that job for 18 months? We really want to be able to track them for as long as possible so that we can really show the impacts of this programming and understand where it's performing, underperforming, overperforming, so that we can continuously improve our service offering.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure exactly where we are in terms of the, at the national level, in terms of the work opportunity tax credit, but, you know, one thing we did with our vets, based on the, you know, their income level and, and long unemployability, or unemployed status, especially when we were working with small business owners, small companies, we were able to tap into the, the WOTC program. Where employers, depending on how long the veteran had been unemployed for, whether the veteran had a service connected disability and things like that, could actually benefit by receiving a, up to a $9,400 tax incentive for that particular veteran, it's a one-time deal, but for that veteran. And that could be applied, right, to their, their overall costs. So it's something that we may be able to look at, take a look at as well in the future, but it would definitely be a benefit for those small companies that are getting ready to, to hire these, these folks.
That's also something-
Oh, I was just going to show that our success team, our partner success team that we're still building out, that's one of their primary responsibilities is to make sure that all tax, tax credits from Department of Labor and otherwise, that people are eligible for are, are accessed. So that is something that we have kind of baked into our systems.
So this document is, it's wonderful. But I would encourage you to create a sheet of, either, well, two, two sheets. Q and A, those kind of questions that get asked and with an answer, but also talking points. And I know that you and President Hiles have done Herculean communication across the state. It's a big state. And so you're, you're, you're hitting those, those folks who are, are listening and they can take it back, and that's all very good. But for example, every time I've spoken to trustees around this issue around competency based and what are the goals and objectives and how is, how is this different than what we have on our camp, on our, on our college campuses? What are those distinctive, you know, we know what we have sort of there, but we don't know what's being off, the differences. So the talking points and the Q and A sheet will be extremely, you can give it to somebody, they can take it back, they don't have to remember the kernels of what you've said, but then they can look at that and, and then have a cogent conversation with their colleagues who have, who are not there, who are not in the room. And that would be invaluable. Again, it's 115 colleges, and it's, it's big, and there is lots of misunderstanding or lack of information, and to the extent that we can, and I know, we can, we can, and I, I know this issue around paper versus online. It can be any number of places, and you can certainly do an online where somebody can have access to it, point, point books to it. But we, we, we need that in, in this venue.
I think that's a brilliant idea to get a, just a talking, use some talking points in like a laminated card, if you will, share with everybody. And one, and one other point that I think gets forgotten sometimes, at least on behalf of our employer community, is that we're seeing in the economy, especially in, in the state of California, that there is a real dearth of people prepared for middle, what we call middle-skill jobs. So we have a whole bunch of people who are wonderfully educated and have, we have wonderful opportunities for great-paying jobs. And, and then we meet a whole bunch of people, there are like 10 million Californians who are struggling in terrible-paying jobs with no benefits. They're doing service sector, care-related jobs on the front line. And then there are a whole bunch of new middle-skill jobs being created every single day that, and millions of them, that really require some good training around how to use this software, how to do maybe manufacturing using the software to inform it, whatever the thing is, because it's, every industry is affected. And these are not jobs that require degrees, but they do require good training so that you can hit the ground running day one, perform for the employer, and get retained and get promoted. And those, that's, that's our niche right there, is those middle-skill jobs. So we will build that, bake that into our talking points, but I just wanted you guys to hear that.
I have a few comments. What you just said, when we were at Solano College last week, they were talking about, what was it, call, was it auto mechanics? The first tool you need to use in an auto mechanic is a computer.
Right.
Yeah, and so that, that really does speak to that. I, I have, I have a couple of things. You know, as, I've been to a lot of colleges and, and I think one takeaway I've gotten is that the thing that really works best, especially in terms of our new strategy with, with AB 705 and guided pathways, is, is this high-touch world and that's been commented on, and I think you guys are appropriately doing really well. You know, reflecting what Member Parago said, I, I hope it's sustainable under community college rules, because it's, I, I do think it's really important, particularly with the, with the kind of people that we're trying to attract to Calbright. There are a couple of things about this that I think could be improved, and there was one thing I wanted to recall specifically, but as you know, and, and we just heard this last week, there's a lot of concern over, and we heard it yesterday, on duplication. And I think it would be really important in any kind of public presentation on Calbright, talking about competency-based education, to really explain how it's unique, how it's different from anything else that's being offered out there in the community college world. I just, I think that's totally essential, because, you know, this, this, this PowerPoint might be able to be expanded and taken on the road, and, and I think that's going to be really, really important to explain, you know, in, in some detail, kind of like what trustee Hall was trying to get at, was, what, who are these students? Why are they coming to Calbright instead of walking in the door of a brick-and-mortar college? You know, and really distinguish what this is, what, what we're trying to do here with Calbright, you know, the, the for-profit college issue and all that. I, so I think this should be beefed up in a way that really addresses the concerns that we've heard, and it also is more descriptive of, of who we're trying to reach and what we're trying to do once they get there. Then the one thing, there was one thing you said that kind of concerned me, and it was, it was about the Amazon principles or whatever. It, it just, maybe because I don't love Amazon, but it just kind of rubbed me the wrong way that, that we would be, as part of our curriculum, teaching a set of corporate values, is probably the nicest way you could say it, but, you know, just a corporate indoctrination of, I'm not sure that's a job skill that, that a public agency should be doing. And, and so that example concerned me. I, I think we, it's vital that we work closely with employers and, and, and we make sure that we're training people for jobs that exist, but I'm not sure that as part of a curriculum that we should be adopting kind of their own internal, you know, employee rhetoric. So, you know, that's just my two cents.
We, we have built out all of our training programs to be specific to employers and what they identify as the hard functional as well as the soft competencies to thrive at that company. So we are going to probably need to get back with you and discuss that in a little bit more detail, because the commitment we make to our employers is that we're training people for their jobs, and that's how we get them to commit, that they'll hire 50 or 100, or whatever the number is, of people who complete those and master those competencies. So if we have an issue there, we should probably untangle that some.
Well, I, I think probably more important than my opinion would be faculty's opinion. You know, that is this something that they would consider kind of a public college curriculum, you know, being appropriate. I, so I'm kind of, our faculty members don't have to comment now, but I, but I think that's, that's where, when you have full-time faculty, that'll be very helpful in, in, in evaluating, you know, exactly what should be in that, that part of the curriculum.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, so a couple of items. There may be some others around this dais who have been trained for their very first job using a training agency. I think I might have mentioned, my mother told me I had to get a job. I was at Santa Monica College, going the traditional route, and she basically said, "You better go out and get a job, darling." And, and, and there were two airlines, American Airlines and Western Airlines, that were looking for folks to start in reservations. And it was a quick two-week program in which the curriculum was there, a quick curriculum, and what followed was an interview with both of them, and then you would get a job offer or not, as the case may be. I took the first offer, which was Western Airlines, and stayed there for 20 years. I say that because I needed that job. I could not have finished school had I not had that particular job. And what I would argue is, it doesn't matter what door you enter, there are multiple doors. That one allowed, I got benefits. I got, I was able, it was a 24-hour, I got a number of benefits from, from that job that allowed me to go back to school and then ultimately get a master's. It took forever, but that happened to be my pathway, and I would suggest for many Californians that we, that are our, that will be our population, that will be theirs. They have to have a job in order to do any of the other things that they need to do. So that's, that's one issue. So I want to kind of respond to what President Epstein said. I, I think that what Calbright's trying to do is to customize its curricula in relationship to what the employer needs. And we may or may not like, so let me just, I like Amazon, don't like Walmart. We can have an argument among ourselves about who we like and who we don't like, but that's kind of personal. And, and many of the folks who are trying to get a job, they don't have the opportunity to have that kind of take-it-or-leave-it kind of thing. We do. We have discretionary dollars, we get to do that. So I think we need to be careful about when we use the term, the values of an organization and what we may like or not like about it. I think there needs to be some thought of what those values are. Are they overarching values that the, in terms of the job and the corporation that you're getting ready to go into? And that should be sort of explicit. There, there may be some issues around problems with that, with that employer that needs to be considered as well. And I think there just needs to be some thought about that, to what extent we want to have a relationship, given, we just need to be very, we need to research that and be very conscious and intentional about that. That's what, that's what I, I would, would offer. The last thing I would say is, when we start to talk, when we start to talk about what we mean by competency and, and to share that broadly, I, I just would encourage Calbright's staff and President Hiles to make certain that it is in line, in alignment with what the chancellor's office response was. That we don't get, we don't get too far off, too far off of that. That was, that was an opinion that went out to parties that was vetted. It was vetted, vetted with lawyers. And so if we stray too far from that, we'll get ourselves not only in sort of trouble, but political trouble relative to that. So I would make certain that that becomes the template in which we are looking at some of the concerns raised by the field. Those, they have been responded to, so I would encourage you to use that as your roadmap.
Trustee Anderson.
I want to differ with the president on this issue. I don't, I hope that as we give direction to the CEO and the staff, that we don't put our own personal agendas in front of the well-being of those students and the people that are looking for good jobs. I can disagree with a company's policy on certain issues, but other people looking for a good job may need those. And so I hope that there is no miscommunication to the staff that we as a board feel that way, and you may feel that way about Amazon, but I want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we're giving the most opportunity for our students to get jobs.
Allow me to clarify. I hate Facebook much more than I hate Amazon. But I, I, I didn't mean to say, no, I think it's great we're working with Amazon. I mean, Amazon's the fastest-growing employer there is. No, I mean, I am totally on board with that. I just, I just worry about, like, I've worked for companies that have their own little kind of, you know, orientation or indoctrination, if you will, about what, you know, their principles are, and, and that's fine. I just, I was just wondering if that was appropriate to be in curriculum. I mean, I, I think teaching the skills that Amazon needs is perfect. I mean, yeah, go for it. So that, I'm sorry if I left a misimpression.
Yeah, but it, but if it's part of getting that job, you have to educate the students about what that employer's, you know, environment is. So, you know, I just hope that we keep an open mind as we move forward.
I will, I will defer to the faculty. Eventually, they're the ones that have to approve the curriculum, so whatever's good with them is good with me.
Trustee Aguanada.
I also wanted to add my two cents in disagreeing with President Epstein.
Meeting adjourned.
So, so you guys, you guys know I work at DeVita. DeVita has seven core values: service excellence, integrity team, continuous improvement, and accountability, fulfillment, and fun. And I'm supposed to memorize all of that, so please tell everybody I did. I see those less of a corporate indoctrination, but more of a soft skill that students and learners have to be aware of before they go into this corporate environment. So if anything, knowing about it in the class provides them with notice that values like the, that, like, these are so important in the workplace. And I think decreasing the amount of surprises we give to the learners is of absolute importance.
Duly noted. Is that it? Anybody else want to pile on? Are there any public comments?
No piling on.
Okay, well then, I think we're ready to adjourn. Thank you all. What?
I hope is that we would just be as open to all employers that operate within our jurisdiction equally and that we don't apply a political filter on any employer so that, you know, to use a different example would be if Hobby Lobby came to us and said they wanted to have a management trainee program, that they have an immediate film. How would we deal with that? So that's why I think your point is well-taken as well, that what does that mean for us to instruct some, a student on a corporation's values as opposed to other values? Think about.
Thank you, Calbright team, and we are now adjourned.